One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, sir, and we'll move on to roll call, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. We're calling roll for Wednesday, January 8th. Vice Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Dour? Martinez? Absent at this time. Ebert?
I am present on Zoom.
Thank you. Reese? Absent at this time. Anderson?
Here.
Sheevy? Absent at this time. Madam Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
Thank you very much. Before we do public comment, we are going to go and have a proclamation today honoring Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. I would like to ask Assistant Police Chief Chris Jacobson to present the proclamation along with Councilwoman, Councilmember Brandy Anderson. Do you think we could get all of our lovely police, law enforcement people up here, please? Thank you very, very much.
Okay, just let her rip. All right. This is a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor in the City of Reno, Nevada, whereas the dedicated men and women of the Reno Police Department and the Reno Municipal Court, Marshal Division work tirelessly to protect and serve the citizens, demonstrating courage, professionalism, and an unwavering commitment to maintain peace and safety. And whereas, law enforcement officers are integral to upholding the rule of law, safeguarding lives and property, and fostering a sense of security for all residents and visitors in our city. And whereas, these individuals often put themselves in harm's way, performing their duties with honor and integrity, and exemplifying the highest standards of public service. And whereas, National Law Enforcement Day was founded in 2015 to thank officers for their daily sacrifices. Since then, organizations nationwide have joined forces to support National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day to spread encouragement and respect to those dedicated officers. And whereas, it is vital for the City of Reno to recognize the sacrifices made by law enforcement, officers, and their families, and to commend their dedication to ensuring justice and safety for all in the biggest little city. Now therefore, I, for Hillary L. Sheevy, Mayor of the City of Reno, Nevada, do hereby declare January 9th, 2025, National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And I, that's all. Is that it?
Do you want to say anything?
On behalf of Chief Nance from the Reno Police Department, she couldn't be here today, the men and women of the Reno Police Department, I'll speak for the Marshals Division. We thank you for this honor and recognizing the work that the men and women in law enforcement in our area do. Thank you.
Well, we thank you very much. Appreciate you all. Okay. Okay, Madam Clerk, we will move into public comment.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Our first item today is opening public comment. Members of the public may here observe and provide public comment virtually by registering through the following link, which can be found on reno.gov/meetings, https://linseno.gov/council01-08. It should be noted for those in attendance that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Council may not take action upon any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you state your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. For those participating in chambers in accordance with council rules 6.3.11, while in this room, please be respectful. Disruptive behavior from audience members like clapping, yelling, whistling, et cetera, which impede the meeting may result in a warning issued by the presiding officer. If this behavior continues, you may be removed from chambers. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Our first public commenter today is Ron Trevor, followed by Paul White, followed by Katie Schneider.
Good morning. My name is Ron Trevor, and I'd like to thank the council today for allowing me to speak. I'm a representative of SAVE, which stands for Senior Auxiliary Volunteer Effort, that works for the Reno Police Department. Today, I've got the recaps for the hours volunteered in the fourth quarter of 2024. SAVE currently has 71 active volunteers and another nine in training. During the fourth quarter, there were a total of 4,930 hours volunteered by members of SAVE. This represents savings of approximately $146,741 to the City of Reno. Some of the key areas that were covered during this timeframe, we had 8,983 citizen contacts. There were 1,902 vehicles tagged for 48-hour notices on parking. We had 1,005 school patrols. There was 454 handicap violation citations issued, and we had another 20 stolen vehicles or fictitious plates located, turned over to RPD. The year-end figures for 2024, there was a total of 18,464 hours volunteered, which represents savings 549,581 hours to the City of Reno. SAVE would like to extend our thanks to the mayor and council members that did attend our SAVE appreciation last month. And that's it. Anybody got any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Trevor.
Thank you. Thank you. See you next quarter.
Paul White, followed by Katie Schneider, followed by Terry Brooks.
Real quick, can I say something reverse to SAVE? Hello?
No, we're not really doing public comment right now, and they just left. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Paul White, Education Crusade. Just before I start, I'd like to say I've been coming for several months. I have yet to see one time when we've got a full board of the council members here. There ought to be a rule, if you're going to be on the council, you need to show up. I would urge you, I would urge you to do something about this homeless issue that we are just letting consume us. RGJ's got an article about that about seven of them, seven of them have been killed in traffic, things just walking around half out of their minds. Well, how are they able to do that? Well, because we insist on keeping Volunteers of America running that CARES campus. That just leaves them to use all the drugs and alcohol they want, have all the weapons they want in there. We've been inside there, we've seen this. Something's got to be done about this. If you just up the block from me, there's our library that's been taken over, and I know it's run by the county, but I would really encourage you to go in and throw your weight behind this while they're doing it. It's become a pornographic hub for the homeless, and 85% of their visitors in there, that's who they are, the families and kids have stopped going to that one. Out by, out by the waste management and the railroad track out there, we've got a dangerous setup out there. There's an abandoned building there, two big camps that got nothing but mountains of stolen stuff in there, and who knows how many trafficked children or women are in there, and the weapons that are out there that we hear about. We've just got to enforce this. VOA was right next door to Sparks Gospel, Reno Gospel Mission for years, and the Gospel Mission was clean and effective and safe. And the city-run Volunteers of America One was dangerous and filthy and ineffective. And the mayor has a plan, and she said she supports it, to be able to deed over that entire CARES campus to a nonprofit alliance of churches, let it be run by Sparks Gospel Mission and Victory Outreach. Get rid of the federal money that doesn't allow you to have any laws. All the things that put somebody on the street are not allowed to enforce there because of the federal money. We've just got to do more than we're doing. It's consuming every aspect of us. The homeless out there, they're less than 1% of the population, they're 40% of the social services, they're 20% of the crime. And this, we don't need more homeless services. We've got medical treatment out the ears, more food than they could eat, more jobs than they could work, and more mental health help than they could ever use, and they don't want it. They're taking advantage of it. Folks, we need to get more involved in this.
Katie, sorry, Katie Schneider, followed by Terry Brooks, followed by Bill Miller.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Schneider. I go by Katie. Thanks for the opportunity to speak here today. I'm here today to tell you about my application for the Parks and Rec Commission. I've been lucky enough to spend the majority of my life in Reno, and it's been a joy to share so many of our beautiful parks and services with my own young children. I want to talk about two areas that distinguish my application: my finance experience and my experience firsthand seeing community-led, public-private partnerships. On the finance side, many of the duties of the commission are to be a financial steward for the organization, to understand the budget and pricing for services, but also to make sure that the master plan can be a success. The number-one goal in the plan was to identify sustainable funding and explore creative partnerships. This is an area I would love to be a part of. I spent the last nine years leading the finance team at Tesla, and my role was to be responsible for the financials from end to end. Everything from the cost to build a brand-new building to each and every light bulb. I particularly enjoyed working with our business partners on their innovative projects and supporting them in their business cases. I've read through the master plan. It's exciting and ambitious, and I'd be thrilled to help prioritize it and match it with a budget, and be an advocate where needed. You don't need to pay an expensive, fancy consultant to do that. I'm qualified and willing to do it on a volunteer basis. I recently made the transition to be a stay-at-home mom to three young children, so our playground consumption has increased quite a lot. I can't help but notice that so many of our beautiful central playgrounds are reaching their useful life. Parks like Virginia Lake, Christie Collin, Idiwild, Manzanita, there are quite a lot, and the existing city funding for renovations could lead them to disarray. Those are primarily funded through residential construction tax, tough to build on in already densely populated areas. I've been able to see some incredible community-led funding projects in my life. My dad, Jack Trainer, led two of my favorites at Idiwild Park, at the Reno Arch Lionsden Playground, and at the Skate Park. The Skate Park is one I'm particularly fond of. I remember the opening day after my dad and our dear neighbor Rick Lakota had seen a need in the community and fundraised to build a brand-new skate park that's still thriving today. It was such a celebration of neighbors, friends, family, and the City Parks Department gathering to do something amazing. I want to push for and personally lead a lot more of these, and get our community involved and inspired to deliver world-class services. I've already been brainstorming how I can repeat the success of the Idiwild Playground for the next generation of children and their very tired parents. Thank you.
And Madam Vice Mayor, just for the record, I'd like to note that Councilmember Martinez did join us via Zoom at 10:09. Our next public commenter is Terry Brooks, followed by Bill Miller, followed by Todd Bailey.
Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks again, and today I'd like to conclude that discrimination is unfair and rude. People who discriminate against others because of their so-called race are people who want to put themselves higher by putting others in a lower place. If we all just do our best to show respect for each other, then we may actually receive more respect from each other. People who discriminate against others because of their gender need to look in the mirror and see themselves as an offender. We exist because of different genders. That's how we evolved. When it comes to our survival, different genders are involved. People who discriminate against others because of their age need to look at their own lives and learn how to turn the page. We all age through time. We all will get older. When we learn from the elderly, our care rests on our shoulder. People who discriminate against others because of their disabilities need to turn their attention toward their abilities. People who can't do some things quite as well as others can probably do other things even better than others. Those who discriminate against a different culture's people need to take a look at their own culture's people. Different cultures have adapted to different environments, and if we listen, we'll learn from each other more about our own environments. People who consider themselves members of a higher class are usually the ones who discriminate against those who they try to see as a lower class. People who discriminate must like to harass, but we are all equal. There is no such thing as class. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and as far as discrimination, for now, that's all I have to say. I have finished my book, and Hillary Sheevy said that y'all would print it up and, I don't know, maybe publish it, use the proceeds to help the porn some way. So what do I do with it now? Okay.
Thanks, Terry. Bill Miller, followed by Todd Bailey.
So I have to follow that, huh? Good morning, council members, staff, fellow citizens. I'm Bill Miller, Reno resident and concerned citizen about the ongoing climate crisis. In short, to start, I want to thank the council for your proactive work to mitigate the impact of global heating on our city, planting trees, installing solar panels, reducing carbon emissions. This is good work, and I and countless others are grateful for your foresight. We are now entering an uncertain time nationally for climate action, even climate sanity. The president-elect claims global warming is a Chinese hoax, whatever that means. The opposition only mentioned climate change obliquely. Meanwhile, the globe hit the 1.5-degree centigrade increase, a target considered by all climate experts and climate negotiators as being an unacceptable danger just 10 years ago. We blew past that last month with hardly a mention in the press. Today, Southern California has exploded in uncontrollable fires, beach communities. Last year, the Goena Creek Fire exploded here. These fires were never seen before. To ignore this escalating danger is foolish and reckless. We have, we here have little influence on the national level, but what we do here matters. So thank you again for your commitment to our community and safety. Thank you for your time.
Todd Bailey, followed by Josh Tyrion, followed by Jerry Mifsud.
Good morning. My name is Todd Bailey, and I am the Research Director at Nevada Accountability. This morning, we're doing an audit of the Reno City Council on NRS 241 public comment. This audit was triggered county-wide up at the Washoe County School District in December when 30 students were delivering public comment, and some of these issues came to light very obviously. And so before we go to the legislature to talk about any revisions to NRS 241, we want to do an audit and see exactly what is happening across the board at all government agencies. And so just to go through some of the criteria, so you understand what this is about, is public comment time certain here at the Reno City Council? Yes, plus five. Is public comment at the beginning and end of each meeting? Yes, plus five. Is public comment allowed on every item of the consent agenda? No. Okay, well, that's a minus five. Public comment is a full three minutes? Yes, that's a plus five. Is the agenda overly intimidating to public speakers with language that goes beyond one paragraph and no more than five cents? No, that's a plus five, okay? Intimidation of public speakers. And what came out at that Washoe County School Board meeting is these were seniors who had to be there as part of their government requirement class. And imagine how they felt talking about Washoe County School District efficiencies with a police officer standing right behind them. Is there more than one law enforcement officer in the meeting? Yes, here you have two, minus five. Is law enforcement official within 50 meters or 50 feet of the speaker's podium? No, plus five. So overall, it's actually a really good score, and congratulations, Madam Vice Chair or Mayor. I would like to enter the results in the public record. Thank you very much.
Josh Tyrion, followed by Jerry Mifsud, followed by Lisa Hill via Zoom.
For the record, my name is Josh Tyrion. I'm here just to make a general comment. Good morning, Madam Vice Mayor, city council members, city manager, and other relevant parties. Being a redevelopment and then a landlord, I often tell people when the phone rings, it is not a contractor calling to tell me the job is on budget, or a customer is asking to pay more rent. I suspect your jobs are very similar. It's not, it is not possible to please everyone at the same time, and most decisions will have both positive and negative impacts. So I'm not here to support, contest, or complain about anything. I'm here to say thank you. I would like to share my gratitude for some of the recent actions this commission, the City of Reno Public Service Departments, Washoe County, and Washoe County have taken to further improve our city and county for the residents and businesses. The recent efforts by Reno PD, Washoe County Sheriff's Department, the Reno Redevelopment Agency, the Reno Business Improvement District, Karma Box, and the City Manager's Office, to name just a few. Your efforts and commitment and willingness to make sacrifices and compromises are appreciated. Our city has great history and great potential to continue making history. We have presented, we've, we've been presented with challenges from our success, federal mandates, and national issues. We have recognized those challenges and have made difficult decisions to combat and overcome them while continuing to support and expand our accomplishments. Thank you for your willingness to see the potential of the city, of this great city, and stay focused on making improvements and recruiting people who are committed. I would like to thank Chief Nance and City Manager Jackie Bryant for jumping in headfirst into the issues which directly affect me and my business, customers along East Fourth Street, and residents throughout the city. Chief Nance and City Manager Bryant have already attended several neighborhood business meetings and have been active in helping initiate positive change and improvements impacting my colleagues, customers, friends, and local businesses. In gratitude to Reno PD and the Washoe County Sheriff's Department, I would like to thank Chief Nance and Sheriff Balem for their leadership and commitment to a safe environment, and their crews for responding to the call of duty. I would like to congratulate Grant Denton and the Karma Box crew, as well as you all, for approving the budget in a time when constructive street services are essential. This applies to your support of the Reno Bid organization as well. My office and many of my properties and customers are in the area supported by Reno Bid and Karma Box, and we utilize their services daily. The respective crews are consistently responsive, considerate, and willing to help. I would like to close by saying that I'm excited about the progress thus far and for the continued improvements. This is a marathon, not a sprint, and the team, support, and vision on hand are reassuring. Wishing you all happy and healthy 2025.
Jerry Mifsud, followed by Lisa Hill via Zoom.
I want Martinez. Martinez called me up and called me a racist and homophobic. That's why he's not here today. Now, he can see me. Can he see me? Because only his nose appears on that screen there. You're a coward. You don't call people up. You're a city council member. Oscar gave you the job. That's racism.
Terry.
I've been holding that all day. And this, with all due respect, that means nothing that you're the vice mayor. You're only the vice mayor when she goes potty. You people have made it really hard for me. I asked for a certificate of accomplishment, and then I'll go away. I want to put it in my portfolio. I've done a lot for seniors. Ask Hillary, is that true? Don't talk. Hillary holds a record. She's the only mayor that dated everybody in one family. Don, Glenn, Stephen, and Cynthia. You dated them all. Who's left? Me. VOA. They're crooks. You should get smart about it. We had VOA run the shelter that my group put in Auburn. That's Leo McFarlane, a billionaire. That's terrible. Homeless people. God bless them. Affordable housing. Instead of courting these big, high-end people, Hillary, at La Strada, you should at least be watching the speaker. You're spoiled. They ran out of red lipstick at Kmart because of you. Oh, you're so cute. Who's missing? Jenny told me not to mention the word gay. When our center came before the city council and asked for $5,000, I'm told that half the city council is gay. You all voted, and you should, to give that, that group, nothing wrong with being gay, okay? But when you play that kind of favorites, what else? 15 seconds. How about a song? Megan, where's Megan? You know, you interrupted me last time I was here. You're never to interrupt the speaker. You should know that. But you misused your position. You used to say vice mayor. They dropped.
Thank you.
Lisa Hill via Zoom.
Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead. Please state your name for the record and begin speaking.
Okay, thank you, and good morning. This is Lisa Hill, and I'm submitting my public comment via Zoom. Thank you for that opportunity.
Jerry, you need to just down, please.
I'm speaking on item C1, which is the Stevenson Street abandon. I'm speaking against that motion today, or that item today. I'm concerned about losing so much public right-of-way downtown. The other thing is more of a question. I, I live in Ward 5, off of Keystone Avenue in the Old Northwest, and I'm starting to see data centers on our public agendas, and my question is, where is there an opportunity for the public to comment on this trend? And how is the city evaluating the climate impacts of these types of developments? Just as a general question. And the reason for my question is, we're one of the fastest-warming cities in the country, and I know that data centers use a tremendous amount of energy. And I think also water is my understanding, and I think these types of developments need special consideration in our community. So if Mr. Reese is not there today, and I'm hoping that his community liaison could send me specific information about how the public can comment on these types of developments, and also what the council is doing to look at such energy-intensive types of developments. Are they considered in a different light than some of the other types of developments? And I did have to provide all of my contact information to, to you to speak today, so I'm hoping that his community liaison is present or has an awareness that I am requesting more information about how to comment on specifically data center developments. more information about how to comment on specifically data center developments. Thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor and Madam Vice Mayor. With that, we have no additional public comment registered. For the record, we did, did receive written correspondence that were prior to 4:00 PM yesterday, either general in nature or, I'm sorry, just general in nature, three letters of, in favor, one letter in opposition, and 29 letters of concern, and those have been distributed to the Reno City Council and are a part of the record.
Okay, we are moving on to approval of the agenda, and I believe City Manager Bryant has some revisions to the agenda.
Yes, thank you. Items B11 and B14 are going to be pulled from this agenda and brought back at a later time. There's requests from the applicant for item C, Charlie One, to be pulled from this agenda, but that will require a motion and a vote from council, according to the City Attorney's Office.
Okay, do you want us to ask for a motion on C1 now or prior to approval of the agenda?
Now, please, and then you can please move to approve to push it to January 22 at the 10:00 AM start time.
Can we get a motion?
Yeah, thank you. I would support their request to continue this item, but I would request that, they've requested to bring it back at the next meeting, which is in two weeks. And I met with them yesterday, and I think they were open to making some changes that would address both the benefits and the impacts of their development. And I'd love to bring it back at the first meeting in February, which is 30 days from now. So my motion would be to continue this item to, let's see, it would be, first meeting, I think, is February 12. And that will give time, two weeks only, to, to work with applicant, and then that would be able to get into the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries.
And so that was February 12, just to be clear.
And can we get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Madam Mayor, do you want me to keep going?
No, I'll take it over at consent.
A motion to approve the minutes.
All right.
From 11:13, 11:15.
I'll give you a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Did you say nay? Motion carries.
Messing with you. I'm messing with you.
Okay, we're moving to the consent agenda.
Okay. All right, we're going to head into the consent agenda. I'm going to ask council members if they have any items on consent agenda that they would like to pull off. I'm going to start with you, Councilwoman Anderson, take it away. Nothing? Okay. Councilman Martinez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Nothing? Okay.
No.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Taylor?
No, Madam Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Doerr?
No.
Councilwoman Ebert?
Yeah, I do have a few I want to pull, but I just want to say upfront, I'm not looking for real in-depth conversations, but I do just want to kind of talk about them high level, just for the benefit of the community. So I would like to pull B8, B9, B10, B12, B13, B15, and B16.
Did you say 13, 15, and 16?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
And Madam Mayor, before we take a vote, I do have public comment.
Perfect. Then I'm going to send it back to you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you so much. We have Ersten Whitten and Cara Montoya.
Good morning. Nice to see you again, and welcome to those who are newly elected or appointed. My name is Ersten Whitten, for the record. My wife and I, Dee Shafer Whitten, are the founders of Soulful Seeds. You've probably heard about us before. We'd like to also acknowledge on item B17, Councilman Martinez actually has sponsored supporting us financially, and we definitely appreciate that. So for the benefit of those who have not heard about us, and for those who are new to this board, let me give you a little bit of background. We started as an organization in 2017 in a small plot that St. Mary's has let us use since then. We basically started growing vegetables and providing them to food pantries. We also gave opportunities for local individuals to come in and work, to donate products, services, et cetera. In 2018, October actually, we became a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And with that, we were able to go out to the community to solicit funds to allow this organization to grow. In 2019, we were awarded the opportunity to lease three acres from Washoe County off the corner of Galette and Glendale at the cost of $1 per year. The objective was to allow individuals who would normally be homeless to come down and work in the garden, gain experiences, work with other individuals, and really give them something to do beyond being in the facilities that, that they were in. We continued to grow through the support of the community. We're supported by local foundations and individuals who make this possible. We also are supported by volunteers who come to the garden and perform work and interact with others in the community. I encourage you to do the same thing, to come, not to volunteer, because I know how busy you are, but to come and visit the garden and see what it's really, really about. It is an asset for the community, and we want to see it continue, continue to grow. I have enjoyed doing this, and I'm probably going to do it until, I don't know when, but in any event, this is a community effort. It is something that is different. If you go down Glendale, just past Galette, you will see an area that's been empty for almost 100 years, that we're making some, we're making it attractive to the community, and we want to continue to do that. One thing I'd like to share with you is that we are heavy into the green waste program. For example, we work with GSR to get their food prep waste, the food co-op with St. Mary's Hospital, and we are now in conversations with the Reno Tahoe Airport to get waste from their various restaurants. So we continue to grow. We're only going to grow with your support, and we look forward to partnering with you to make this an even more successful organization within this northern Nevada area.
That is fantastic.
I'll try and keep it quick, just a few words. Thank you for allowing us to share the impact that Soulful Seeds has within our community. Our mission is simple yet profound. We work hand-in-hand with underserved communities to cultivate not just food, but also knowledge, empowerment, and well-being for people in the Reno Sparks area. By transforming vacant urban spaces into thriving gardens, we provide access to fresh, nutritious food directly to those who need it most, but we don't stop there. We also offer comprehensive food education programs that teach valuable skills such as sustainable farming practices, nutrition, and cooking. In addition to promoting food equity, Soulful Seeds is deeply committed to our workforce development program, which we launched this year, or the end of last year. We provide job training and help with employment placement, empowering individuals to gain meaningful work experience and build careers that contribute to their communities. Soulful Seeds is more than a gardening project. We are a movement towards food equity, community resilience, and economic empowerment. Our goal is to nourish minds, bodies, and communities, fostering a future where everyone has the resources, knowledge, and opportunities to thrive. We work in close partnership with other local entities that work towards helping better people's lives, so our place Step 2, Women's Crossroads, are a few examples, to bring food and programs to those who need it most. So thank you so much for letting us share more about what Soulful Seeds does, and we look forward to hopefully seeing some of you in the garden.
That is fantastic. Absolutely phenomenal. I'll have Brian reach out. Good job.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I realize I probably need to do a disclosure on this item. So, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, I just want to disclose that I was one of the founding board members of Soulful Seeds when they first started up. I left the board about four to five years ago, so I, I don't believe I need to recuse myself, but I did want to disclose this in the interest of transparency.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, they do a phenomenal job. Ersten is a great leader, and his wife Dee Shafer is also a great leader. They've done a tremendous job, and they've kept at it, right? I mean, they continue to persevere and expand.
That's awesome. Good job, Naomi. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, with that, we have no additional public comment.
Okay, thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to ask council members to approve all the items except for B8, B9, B10, B12, B13, B15, and B16. May I get a motion?
So moved?
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I also just wanted to call out, there's some really cool businesses on here. Pella Uto, Joseph Vienna, who else did I miss? Pure Country, really cool businesses on here. So congratulations on your business endeavors, and we look forward to working with you here at the city. Okay. And if I forgot you, I didn't mean to intentionally. My readers are just not as strong today. Okay, let's head into item B8. Councilwoman Ebert, take it away.
Yeah, so I just wanted to discuss this real quick, because I know I had a question when I saw this on the original agenda, that, you know, this says it is a approval of a privileged business license for wholesale alcohol that is not in the city. So if we could just get, you know, a brief description as to why the city would be signing a license in that situation?
Good morning, council members. Madam Mayor, Lance Ferrato, Director of Business Licensing, for the record. So simply put, this is a state, this, this entity is licensed by the state to be a wholesaler, and they are not located within the city of Reno, but they want to conduct business here. They want to make sales to retail stores in Reno. So they're conducting business, and because of that, they need to be licensed.
So they're not going to physically have a location in the city of Reno, but they would like to sell to the city of Reno, so that's the reason for the license?
That's right. They're home-based in Mound House, and so they sell alcohol to other jurisdictions, presumably probably the Carson area, the Dayton area, Sparks perhaps, but now they want to operate in Reno, and so they need the licensure to do that.
Okay. And are they just a manufacturer, or do they also have any kind of, like, restaurant or lounge locations?
No, and actually, it's not a manufacturer, it's a wholesaler. So it's the second part in the three-tier system. So they buy from manufacturers, and then they sell to retailers. So they're the middleman.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you so much. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Sending it right back to you, Councilwoman Ebert, item B9.
Hello. So for this item, it's a contract that we're awarding to Sierra Nevada Construction for permanent patch program in the amount not to exceed over $2 million with the street fund. Can you just explain what this pays for, and what part of the community we'll just go for? Is this citywide? Is this ward-specific? Is this tied to a specific project? Or just how does this work with these funds?
Yeah, absolutely. So Hans Meyer, Senior Civil Engineer in the Public Works Department, for the record. Basically, this project, it is an annual project. Typically, I'm before this body every December or January on this. It's the standard of practice for what is our excavation and encroachment permits. Basically, with those permits, there are street cuts that happen in our roadways. This program and this project is funded by fees collected by those permits to operate and repair our roadways, essentially with a consistent quality, consistent price, and an overall end product that is better for our roadways.
Okay, so my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that if there's a project that involves tearing up a roadway to install, like sewer, power, something like that, the developer would do that, they would do a patch, but then this is a fund that they would pay into with impact fees, and then the city would use those monies to do, like, the official permanent patch?
Yes, essentially. It's a, and those funds are a complete pass-through, they cover the entire cost.
Right. Okay, so that way we ensure that each patch job is done up to a particular standard, and we're not reliant on different crews doing different work. It's kind of uniform across the city. Is that accurate?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, I have a motion.
Anybody? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thanks. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, sending it right back to you, Councilwoman Ebert, item B10.
This one, this one, I also had some questions on, so I'd just like to get this out there for the public to understand as well. So this is approval of roofing services with Garland doing business, or Garland Inc. for roof thermogenic assessment at the Reno Event Center, in the amount not to exceed $3,660. Can you please just kind of explain what this will cover, what they're going to be doing if they get this contract?
Yes, Justin George, Senior Civil Engineer for Public Works. What this contract will do is it's an assessment of the roof system at the Reno Event Center. So the thermographic assessment looks at if there is any moisture underneath the waterproof membrane. So if there is any moisture present, the insulation will need to be removed and replaced before we do a roofing project. So this is the first step in putting together a package that will go out to bid for a roofing project at the Reno Event Center.
Okay, so this is kind of like, we, we want to kind of resurface the roof, but there might be areas that need a more kind of intensive patch? Is that what we're looking for?
Correct, yeah. The, the roof at the Reno Event Center is nearing 20 years old. It needs to be resurfaced, and this is that first step to see how deep we need to go. If there's no moisture, we don't need to replace insulation. If there is moisture, we do need to replace those sections of insulation that there is. So this gives us a better picture at how to bid that project to get the, the best possible price.
Okay, so will this also identify, like, hey, we can just spot replace certain areas, or we need to do a complete re-roof?
Correct, yeah. This will indicate if there's moisture in any locations and where it's at, and how, how large of an area we would need to replace to spot replace and minimize those repairs.
Okay, is it possible this would identify that the entire roof needs to be replaced? I mean, I don't want to be doom and gloom, but just curious.
The, the, the roof is mostly watertight, so yeah, this would identify, you know, how much of an area we need to do. The hope is not to have to do more than we need to. So this will show us exactly where there is wet insulation and, and what exactly needs to replace, so we don't have to do too much or the whole, whole roof.
Okay, all right. So I don't know if that really answered what I was asking. Is it potentially, could it be the whole area, or are we hoping that we just have to do spot, kind of, water damage repairs?
We are hoping to do just spot water damage repairs.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve unless someone else has questions.
All right. Thank you. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. All right. Heading into item B12. Councilwoman Ebert, take it away.
Okay, so just want to talk about this a little bit. This is an acceptance of a donation from the Gary Sinise Foundation for two AquaEye sonar devices to be used by the Reno Fire Department Water Entry Team. So I just wanted to hear from the Fire Department briefly, just how this will be integrated into what we have currently, if this is new equipment, if this is more advanced equipment, just kind of high level, what we'll be using this for.
All right, good morning. For the record, John McNamara, Operations Chief for Reno Fire Department. So yeah, we are taking acceptance or delivery of two handheld AquaEye sonar devices. So these will deploy, be deployed in two of our wet boat rigs. We have Boat 4, which is downtown, and Boat 11, which is west, Station 11, Somerset area. These are new tools for us, and it's brand-new technology, especially during the wintertime. Especially during the wintertime when we have ice that forms in the ponds, we have responded many times to people that fall through the ice or even animals. Specifically, 2015, we had three young kids go through the ice in South Meadows and unfortunately, one of them did not survive. And this, these two piece of equipment will hopefully help us avoid those situations again. Anytime we say we have a emergency response for someone through the ice or in Virginia Lake, those units will be deployed and hopefully will allow us to locate someone submerged underwater up to 50 meters away and save time and get to that person and effect a rescue. That sums up for the donations.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for sharing that with us and for sharing why we need equipment like this and just want to say thank you and thank you to the firefighter teams in Reno. I know that they do so much every year, just really save lives. So thank you for coming up and going over that with us. Does anybody have a question?
I had just a quick comment, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just want to thank you for your work. You know how, I know that one of the units anyway is centered in Moana, Fire Station Three, which is in my ward and I've seen your work in action. And I wanted to get clarification. You sort of spoke continuously, but I wasn't sure, did you say someone fell through or an animal fell through the ice and was not rescued?
Yeah, so in 2015.
2015.
Yeah, three, three young boys were playing on the ice.
Yes.
And they fell through. And two were able to be rescued and one was not.
I thought it was, I thought you were speaking about like this year. I was trying to get caught up.
I mean, I've been here 26 years and that's still one of our, you know, one of the causes.
The worst.
Remember the family came?
Oh, yeah.
It was awful.
Yeah, it was horrendous. I just thought there was a repeat.
No, knock on wood, especially with this, this year being warm. We haven't had much ice formation.
Right.
But it's actually, this kind of weather is actually worse than having a solid freeze because the freeze thaw nature makes the ice incredibly weak. So yeah, this is something that I am happy that we have on the apparatus.
Yeah, fantastic.
And will make a difference. Hopefully never need to use it, but it's there.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Ebert.
Yeah, make a motion to approve?
Second. I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, item B 13.
Yeah, just wanted to inquire about what this equipment is, what's it for, what locations will it be at? Is this something mobile or something that's ADA compliant? To just kind of get a little more information on what this yoga equipment is. And probably should have read it a little bit here. It's acceptance of equipment donation from given kind valued at 22, almost $23,000 for yoga equipment to support fitness classes hosted through the Parks and Recreation Department. So will this be at one location or is it mobile or how does this work?
Yeah, Councilmember Ebert landed Miller Fund Development Manager for Parks and Rec here to assist you in your questions. So yes, we are fortunate to receive about 199 cushions and 193 yoga mats with this, with this grant here. And our plan is to distribute them all throughout the area. So we'll be able to do it not at one particular location, but really all over the community. So that will include all recreation facilities. We're going to be doing this as we activate parks throughout the area. Also, great activity for our seniors, stretch classes, and it is a citywide thing. So not just specific to one location, one park. We will deploy these yoga mats and cushions everywhere.
Great, that's really great news. Yeah, yoga mats are probably pretty mobile, so thank you for that.
Yep.
Does anybody else have any questions?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve?
Second. I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, item B 15, Councilwoman Ebert.
Mike Michelle, Engineering Manager for the record.
One sec, Mike, hold on. So this is for acceptance of some streets on Ward Four and I just would kind of like to hear what, what is the difference between a city not owned and maintained, or I'm sorry, what's the difference between a street not owned and maintained by the city of Reno and what happens once they're accepted by the city of Reno?
Well, prior to these streets being accepted, they were owned and maintained by the underlying developer, in this case, D.R. Horton. So if a street is not maintained by us, it's maintained by another entity. In this case, it was the developer and that's standard practice.
So does that mean they would be responsible for snow plowing or street sweeping or anything like that?
Yes.
Okay, so now that we're accepting them, they'll now be on the route for snow plowing and all of that kind of stuff?
Correct.
Okay, pothole maintenance. Does that include sidewalk repairs as well?
Sidewalk repairs, they would be the responsibility of the adjoining property owner.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve. If you don't mind, if we could do B 15 and 16 at the same time, is that, are we able to do that, Mickey?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve B 15 and B 16.
Second. I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Madam Clerk, heading it back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item C one was continued earlier today to February 12th, so we're on item C two, Security Circle ZMA.
Okay. Hi.
Hi, good morning, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Rayly, nice to see you.
You too. For the record, Mike Rayly, Planning Manager with Development Services. This item is a zoning map amendment request for a 2.2 acre site located at the northeast corner of South Security Circle and North Virginia Street, just south of Golden Valley Drive. The request includes two parcels located at 7705 and 7725 Security Circle and it's requested that the current MS zoning mixed-use suburban be changed to mixed employment, ME.
And Mike, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Madam.
I was going to do it right after. I guess maybe we should do it now.
Yeah, we need to open the public hearing before we continue.
That's all right. No problem. Okay, Madam Clerk, at this time, we're going to open the public hearing. Let the record reflect that the council is opening the public hearing on item C two. Madam Clerk, was proper notice given and correspondence received?
Proper notice was given and we did not receive any correspondence on this item.
Okay, great. So clearly no public comment.
No public comment. Thank you.
All right, thanks for confirmation. Go ahead, Mike, sorry, sorry about that.
My apologies. I jumped the guy.
I just swapped agendas with Jackie, so now we're up to speed. So go ahead.
Sure. As I mentioned, it's a 2.2 acre site located on North Virginia Street at the intersection of South Security Circle. It's currently being used for outdoor storage of operable vehicles and this is a request to amend the zoning from MS to ME. Here you'll see a side-by-side comparison on the zoning. This is a request that will bring the current parcels into compliance with the existing mixed employment master plan. The current MS zoning does not conform with the master plan designation, so this will bring the property into conformance and it will also allow the property owner to legalize the existing outdoor storage use that's occurring on site. This just provides a quick comparison between the two zoning districts. Generally speaking, mixed employment is much more restrictive than mixed-use suburban. It allows for less intense uses and it's a less intense use than industrial or industrial This kind of shows you, for example, that there's no height limit currently. This would restrict heights to 55 feet. Really, it eliminates the potential for residential development at the site largely. So with that, staff can make all the findings. This was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
All right, Mike, good job. Okay, any council members want to weigh in?
Yeah, just questions.
Hold on one second, I'm going to head down here. Vice Mayor?
Oh, no, I was going to make a motion.
Oh, okay, go ahead. Councilwoman Ebert.
Mr. Rayly, could you go back to your slide that shows the side-by-side comparison? I just want to understand first, I thought it showed that they, this slide on the left, it seems to say they're, is the shading that they are all the same, but then it shows that on the right, they're going to something different, that's different than all their neighbors? But then the next slide showed they were all the same, so I got confused.
Sure. So this slide is actually the zoning. So currently, everything on that east side of Virginia Street is on mixed-use suburban, MS, which is not conforming with the master plan, which is the next slide.
Everything on, everything that's shaded is not conforming?
That is correct.
So, so what is their purpose in changing the zoning?
So the purpose of this zoning is actually originally came to us through business license. There's currently an outdoor storage use, it's boat and RV storage that's being.
And that's non-conforming?
It's non-conforming. So this would bring them into conformance.
So when it changes, are they going to change their use to match the?
So they will have to apply for a site plan review.
Oh.
And that actually, the site plan for, they applied for a site plan review that has been issued contingent upon this zone change.
Oh, oh, that helps. So what you're saying is they're doing a storage now. It's non-conforming. It was brought to someone's attention that they didn't have a permit for that use, is that correct?
So from what we gather through business license is the current owners purchased this property, it's historically been used for boat and RV storage. They came in to get their business license and it was identified that it was.
That it was not permitted?
That's correct.
So they are, they did apply for a site plan review, is that done by staff?
It is.
Okay, and so is there notice to neighbors when that's done?
We notice everybody within 750 feet and the site is also posted.
Gotcha. And then this will change their master plan or the zoning?
Just the zoning to mixed.
So everyone else is still not in conformance?
All those parcels have non-conforming zoning, whether their uses are non-compliant, that's to, apples to apples.
Do we care? I mean, would we do any research or investigation on all these surrounding, having brought this to our attention?
So we have been, all of the parcels are non-conforming on, like I mentioned. So for example.
But that's okay.
Yeah, we don't charge for this zone change. It's a procedural matter.
Right.
The majority of those parcels, there's a large number that are undeveloped, other are industrial type uses that would conform in the future should they, should they come forward with a new use, they would likely go through this same process.
So it's sort of a cleanup?
Absolutely.
To bring it into conformance? And they also have pending the site plan or it's approved, but contingent on this?
It's approved with the condition.
I got you. Thank you so much for that extra explanation. Thank you.
All right, any other council members in the sky that need to weigh in?
Yeah, yeah, I do actually.
Okay, go ahead.
So the store is already there, correct?
That is correct.
So was the storage already built when this new applicant purchased the property or did they build it?
It was already constructed and they, they were operating with a valid business license, but the use, they allowed their business license to lapse for over a year. The previous, the previous owners.
Sorry, I was so long on you there. So did, did anybody contact them about their business license or I'm just curious about how this happens and maybe we can like close the loop on this so it doesn't happen again in the future is basically what I'm trying to get at.
I, I can't say with certainty if they were contacted. We do send, I know business license does send out renewal notices and whatnot. I think what happened is most likely the property was put up for sale and the previous owner, you know, failed to renew his license.
Okay, so maybe it's just due to the transition from the previous owner to the new one that it just kind of, maybe it even went to the previous owner or something?
That, that would be my speculation, yes.
Okay, okay, so we're kind of like taking it back to what it was?
Essentially, and with the site plan review that's pending, that would bring it into full compliance with current city standards.
Okay, and as you mentioned, it's going into conformance with master plan, so there's no fees associated with that. And that's, that's that way because we're trying to encourage people to get into conformance with the master plan, is that correct?
That's correct.
But, but is it the master plan or zoning?
It's the zoning would now provide for master plan amendment, master plan conformance.
So this changes for master plan?
This changes for zoning, that brings the zoning into conformance with the master plan.
Right, well, we're not changing the master.
That's correct.
I got you.
Okay, all right, so I guess I don't have any other questions. I really was just kind of concerned about how, how we got to this point with the business license lapsiting, but it makes sense with, you know, the transfer of the ownership that something would have fallen through the cracks because it sounds like it hasn't been without a license for that long, is that correct? Like about a year?
That's correct.
Okay, and how long has this applicant owned the property, do we know?
I do not, I believe they, they started their business license process roughly three or four months ago.
Okay, so that's about when they took over, is that accurate or do we know?
That's, that's accurate.
Okay, all right, so I think that's it for me, unless anybody else has a question.
All right, do any other council have questions? Seeing that there are none, I am actually going to ask any council members if they have any disclosures on this item before we vote. Nothing? Okay, then I'm going to send it to our.
I just, real quick, just want to throw in that the applicant did come to my NAB and did kind of explain the situation, so I just want that on the record that he is, has actively made an effort to be open in front, upfront with the community about what happened. I wasn't able to ask the specific of a question during the NAB about what happened with the license. I wanted to talk to staff about it, but I just wanted to put that on the record that they have made, you know, every effort to be open and upfront with the community about this process and what's happened here. So I just wanted to say that.
All right, thank you for the clarity. Appreciate it. Okay, going to send it to you, Carl Hall, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance introduction, bill number 7291, case number LDC 25-00010, Security Circle Yard Zoning Map Amendment, ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.02 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled zoning, rezoning, a plus or minus 2.2 acre site located on northeast corner of the intersection of North Virginia Street and Security Circle for mixed-use suburban, MS, to mixed employment, ME, together with matters which pertain to or are necessarily connected therewith, Word Four.
All right, thank you so much. Councilwoman Ebert, give me a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, is that, or adopt?
Motion to refer.
Motion to refer.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, you guys. Okay, moving on to item C three, correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you so much. We will now open the public hearing. Let the record reflect that the council is opening the public hearing on item C three. Confirm notice, so Madam Clerk, was proper notice given and any correspondence received?
Madam Mayor, no correspondence was received and the item was properly noticed.
Okay, thank you so much. Now I'm going to send it right back to Carl Hall to read the ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance introduction, bill number 7292, case number LDC 25-00019, Orcrest Drive Zoning Map Amendment, ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.02 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled zoning, rezoning, a plus or minus 1.18 acre site located on the north side of Orcrest Drive, approximately 240 feet east of its intersection with Carson Lane, from Large Lot Residential, one acre, LLR-1, to mixed employment, ME, together with matters which pertain to or unnecessarily connected therewith, Word Four.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to send it to you, Councilwoman Ebert.
Can I actually get a quick presentation or explanation of what is happening there?
Good morning. Once again, Mike Rayly, Planning Manager with Development Services, for the record. This request is very similar to the last request that we reviewed, it's a 1.1 acre site located on the north side of Orcrest Drive. To give you some kind of bearings, it's east of the Bonanza, north of Par Boulevard, and it's a request from Large Lot Residential, one unit per acre, or one dwelling unit per acre, to Mixed-Employment ME. And here's a side-by-side comparison. This very similar to the last case, the, the area is master plan, mixed employment. The neighborhood is really kind of an area of transition, where we've seen more industrial development, north of Par Boulevard, south of the railroad tracks, as this map indicates, the parcels adjoining are either industrial or ME with a large lot residential remnant to the south. And here is the master plan map, showing that, basically, everything surrounding, other than to the north, surrounding the site is designated as mixed employment. So, once again, this is a cleanup item, how we would consider it, we did not charge for this zone change, it brings it into conformance with the master plan. This is, once again, kind of development standards, but really, that is an area that's transitioning to more of business-type uses rather than residential. Staff can make all the findings, and once again, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the, of the change.
Okay, and is there a project attached to this zoning change already?
At this time, there is no specific project being proposed, however, due to the residential zoning to the north, any project that would come in would trigger a discretionary review, at a minimum, a site plan review, or if it was a more intense use, a conditional use permit would be required.
Okay, and is there direct, like, residential adjacency?
There's, the property to the north is zoned residential, it's undeveloped, there's no developed residential directly adjacent to this parcel.
So, is that parcel that's zoned residential, is that, is that out of conformance also with the master plan?
No, parcels to the north are actually conforming to, they have a mixed residential master plan designation, so the parcels to the north are currently conforming.
Okay, and you said this one is a change to come into conformance with the master plan?
Correct.
Okay, and the, the parcels not worth of it, but on the other sides are also mixed employment?
Yes.
Okay, all right, does anyone else have any other questions? I might have more, but I don't know if my time is running out.
No, go, go right ahead, you have a minute left.
Okay, is there any type of screening or light, kind of-
Yes.
Dark-skies type of lighting tied to this project? I mean, I know it's not really there yet, but will there be any requirements for screening and dark skies type of lighting?
There will be, there will be, no matter what is developed on this site, it will be subject to our residential adjacency standards, which have very specific requirements for screening, setbacks, lighting, those sorts of things.
Okay, and is there any landscaping or planting of trees that comes along with this type of zoning?
Yeah, so, any, any new project would be required to install landscaping per the, the ME standards and the residential adjacency standards.
And they're already, like, in area hooked up to, like, sewer and all of that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I think that's it for me.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, then, one thing I probably should ask, if council has any disclosures on this item. Seeing that there are none, Councilwoman Ebert, would you like to give me a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to refer.
All right, thank you so much. I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, great.
All right, Madam Mayor, we're on Item F1, Ordinance Adoption, to be read by the City Attorney's Office.
Okay, great, I'm gonna send it to you, Carl Hall.
Ordinance adoption, Ordinance Number 6692, Case Number TXT 23-00005, Title 18, Zoning Code Cleanup, Ordinance to adopt an updated Title 18 Annexation and Land Development Code of the City of Reno, of the Reno Municipal Code to address grammatical errors and inconsistencies with regulations, unintended deletions or insertions, and changes from the 2023 Legislative Session, together with matters which pertain to or are necessarily connected therewith.
All right, thank you so much, make it a motion. I have a question first.
All right, first of all, I wanted to say, this is a very large document, it's hundreds of pages. I am very grateful for the time that Ms. Fuess and Lauren spent with me going over it in two separate meetings. I can, I was not able to participate in the ordinance, the first reading, so, I wasn't able to bring up any questions, but I am supportive of passing this today, but I have two kind of outstanding concerns, or maybe more, but the two are, one is about the data centers, and in this iteration of the improvement to the code, they include a new use called data center, which didn't exist before, and I, I think that's a good idea, personally. And they also, I believe, told me that, as such, data centers would generally require at least a site plan review, if not a CUP. Could you just address that?
Thank you, for the record, Angela Fuess, Assistant Director with Development Services. We have added a whole new use for data centers, we've added a definition, these are definitely different than a warehouse, many jurisdictions, and how we also interpreted it before, is data centers were viewed as a warehouse, so we've separated them from warehouses, we have required a conditional use permit for all data centers.
CUP, okay, and that would go to the Planning Commission?
Correct.
All right, I really like that change, I think we should probably go further, you know, we've heard a lot, both in the general media nationally, as well as locally, that data centers are very energy-intensive, also water-intensive for cooling, and so and so forth. I would love to see us adopt some special standards for data centers, similar to other uses that, that have unique impacts. What would be the process for that?
You can do a separate, you can initiate a text amendment, if you want to do a deeper dive on data centers, and we would do that at a separate meeting.
Okay, and so, we would first request a text amendment?
Correct.
Okay, well, I, I'm probably like to do that, there may be others that support that as well, I think, you know, it deserves our attention, since these are starting to come into Reno, they've been out in Story County already, they've been in California, they've been in other parts of Nevada, but, to my knowledge, we've had very few applications, I mean, I remember a couple, but they didn't come to fruition. I would love to see us adopt special requirements for, let's say, offsetting their energy use, maybe through solar power or something else, having battery backup on site, maybe that's also supported by solar, doing what Switch does out in Story County, which they're completely sustainable, so they don't use new potable water, they don't use, they have solar to offset their energy use from the grid, and I think they've established a model right next door to us in Story County, so that's one change. I'd like to see going forward, possibly, and I'm not saying this today, possibly also a moratorium, till we could address those issues, because I, I don't think we want four to go forward and then come in with special requirements, I think we should stop sooner than later, get it under control.
Okay.
I'll come back with my second comment.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? No?
I-
Go ahead, Councilwoman Ebert, take it away.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't know if anyone else on council is aware, but I've had two applications for data centers come through my NAB, one at my last NAB, and one, the NAB before that, so, they're coming in fast, and I, I'm not speaking in regard to either project specifically, but I'm also the liaison for the Planning Commission, and they're really looking for council to give them more guidance on how these warehouses should be conditioned, so I agree with Councilmember Duer, that we should have a separate, kind of, deeper dive into the requirements for data centers, they are not just a new type of use, they're, well, that's, they are a new type of use, but it's extremely different, it's, you know, a use that takes up as much power as, you know, thousands of houses, so we really need to be aware and considerate of the impact on the infrastructure, and I was able to meet with Councilmember Duer and Ms. Fuess, and another staff member yesterday to talk about this, and I, I agree, I think that we should require some type of solar to offset the demand that they are going to put on, on our electricity resources, and I'm not sure what that looks like, I have some suggestions for rooftop solar, or covered parking with solar on it, and also, the use of effluent perhaps in their cooling, that's kind of a two-birds-one-stone thing, so we can have an additional use for effluent, and they're also getting water for their coolant, and not, not using a very precious resource, which is water in Nevada, so I think that there's a lot of ways for us to be kind of champions for our, frankly, our, our master plan, which says that we should be, I'm gonna misquote it right now, but efficient and environmentally conscious, you know, where we can be, and I think this is the biggest area where we have that opportunity to do so, and I think that we need to do so, and before any development goes in, because I think it's gonna be really hard to let somebody or a couple developments come through with one set of rules and then change it up later. So, I agree with Councilmember Duer, that we should consider a moratorium, just so that we can figure out these details before any projects go through, and that's just to be fair to all data centers in the future. Was my time, was that the bell?
Yeah.
Okay, I will have more comments, I can-
Okay, I'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Angela, one of the things that does concern me when we talk about CUPs, whether it's this use or any other use, and just confirm with me, when a CUP happens, that, let's just say, the business or project wants to sell that, doesn't the CUP run with that?
It does.
And so, that's one thing I think I would love to see come back, and the reason being is, you could have a business that was doing great operations, and then all of a sudden, once they sell the project, then they're not doing such great operations and business practice, so that's something that always concerns me when we talk about CUP, so, maybe it's something that we could look at.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I'm gonna send it back to you, Councilwoman Duer, take it away.
Yeah, the last piece on the data centers is just Chair of Tomwa, and over on Tomwa, they are starting to look more closely at, usually, if someone brings water rights, they will issue a will-serv type letter. However, on high-intensity water uses, they are starting to want the board, the staff is, want the board to weigh in on the appropriateness of a use, that could be a water bottling plant, that could be a data center, so, I'm, I'm just saying, not just in this forum, but even in other forums, they're starting to, this is very new for Tomwa, they've never weighed in, they were basically agnostic as to the use, but now, with heavier water uses, they're starting to be more concerned, and so, just to let you know some things that are happening in other jurisdictions, or other venues. The other thing I wanted to bring up was, I understand that in this current version of Title 18, that's being proposed, or we're voting on today, we have loosened up the requirements for parking lot renovations, so, a lot of times, people come in, they want to restripe, or refresh their landscape, let's say, in their parking lot, but, our current requirements require that they come up to code, and many of these are old parking lots that don't meet current code, and so, it's a disincentive, it makes them wait and hold off from the improvements, and, and we don't want a disincentive, so I appreciate what we're doing. At the same time, over in our Urban Forestry Commission, they've been very worried about parking lots, because they're big, open, black spaces that are real heat sinks, and as we all know, Nevada, Reno, is the fastest-warming city in America, has been demonstrated over and over, and so, we've gotta do something to offset the heat capture from these parking lots. So, I'm hopeful, as we get into our tree ordinance review, that we look at that and maybe come back with a, a separate analysis of trees and parking lots, I mean, it's not about striping, paving, other bushes, it's really just about trees and their role in helping mitigate this urban heat island effect. So, while I support this, you know, this idea of getting reinvestment in parking lots, I also want to see in particular the trees brought to the front, so that we can start offsetting this. So, while I'm gonna support this today, we, I still have a, let's call it a parking lot issue, right? That's what we call it, when we want to hold something back, so, I'm just, it's sort of a note to everyone involved in trees, and, and I know our manager's taken a personal interest, and so, letting her know too, this isn't the end of this, anew, this isn't the end of this conversation. Okay, thanks.
Councilwoman Ebert?
Yeah, sorry, thank you for that. Yeah, also, yeah, trees as well, and I, I know from just working with the community, there's also people that are willing to donate trees and volunteer their time and things like that, so maybe there's an opportunity to, to have kind of more partnerships with tree requirements and, and things like that, so I also support that, but, yeah, I really just cannot stress enough how important I think it is, that we really make sure that we identify what we expect our data centers to look like, and how they function, because, you know, from, from my personal experience in my ward, I anticipate many of them coming in, and there are a lot of square footage, and, you know, I'm hearing about five jobs each, so, our space is finite in Reno, and I want to make sure that we really get this right, if we're moving forward with them, and really focus on sustainability, which is a City of Reno goal as a whole, so, I'm not sure, Angela, how do we make the motion today with, with it stated that we're gonna do a separate review for warehouses, and also, is this the part where we would say we're gonna take up a moratorium on data centers until we get this established?
All right, seeing as I'm right, I'm just proposing two separate issues, so anyone that can clarify? They are, so just for clarification, any efforts to implement a moratorium on the data center would need to be brought back at another agenda, so that's not something that can occur today. With respect to the current Item F1, Title 18, Zoning Code Cleanup, it does contain information relative to data centers, and so, I'm assuming and asking for clarification, that the motion for approval would include what is in there now, and then, what I heard Councilmember Duer say was that she would like, in addition, something to come back as a text amendment in the future.
Yeah, yep. Bless you.
Does that need to be included in the vote today? Like, do we say with additional amendment to this ordinance?
No.
Carl said no.
No.
Okay, thank you. Carl said no. Okay.
We, we just have to bring it back separate.
Yeah, yeah.
So, just for the record, I understand the direction, and we'll be working on it and bringing back something.
In, in that case, then, can we have a little bit more of a presentation about what the current guidelines are for data center development that we'll be going through with this ordinance?
This, Carl, we're not agendaized for that, we can bring that back and fill you in.
It's in the draft, though, I mean, she's just asking, what is in the draft related to data centers?
Related to data centers, we now have a separate use called data center, and we have separate standards for data centers, so we've identified that if you're doing a data center, you have to screen the building, similar to warehouses, that's our biggest issue when we have these industrial buildings, we gave them the same type of standards, and then for data centers, because we don't want any confusion between a building that has a lot of trucks coming and going, versus a data center, which has very few trucks, we've limited the number of dock doors. So warehouses, you have unlimited dock doors, you can really pretty much have as many trucks coming and going 24 hours a day, data centers, we limited it to three dock doors, so there's no chance you're gonna build a data center until it's your data center, and then change it to some kind of a distribution use. We also have requirements that data centers require a conditional use permit, they are not allowed by right anywhere in the City of Reno, so every single data center that comes forward will go through a public review process, that can then be appealed to City Council, and you can add additional conditions, or, you know, approve or deny as, as you see fit.
And that would have to be consistent with the master plan?
Yes.
And the master plan does speak to sustainability issues and many issues.
It does.
So, those could be looked at by staff and council, if it happened to be appealed to council?
Correct.
Okay, I think that's an important thing to say, so, that's good for me to know.
Yeah, and Angela, Councilwoman Ebert, I think you can hear that she put in more standards, which is a good thing, because I do think that helps when the council looks at those projects, so, thanks, Angela, I know-
And I think for that next step, then, we'll bring forth an initiation of the text amendment, and then we will start the process all over again, that means public review, that means Planning Commission review and input, that means NABs, that means the data center developers themselves, that means NV Energy, so it will not be in a bubble, we will expand it- We will expand it to everyone that is interested, that feels that they should participate in that discussion.
Sure.
And that's for data centers?
Correct, specific to data centers.
So before, before, it was just blanket warehouse?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Does that make sense, Councilwoman?
Yes, I just wanted it to be clear what, what will happen with data centers with this ordinance. And then, I don't know if we could just kind of say high level, too, what this ordinance says for warehouses that are 500,000 square feet or larger within a certain distance to residential development?
Yes. So any, under the proposed changes, any warehouse that's within 300 feet of residential will have to go through a conditional use permit. That is new. That's not something we've always had.
Great. So can we just get like a click, like what's new? What's different? Is it just that, or is there?
We also, yep, we also, from specific to warehouses, we also looked at where they're allowed. And so, for instance, right now, a warehouse is allowed in public facility zoning. We thought, well, that probably doesn't make sense. So we removed warehouses from public facility zoning. We also looked at warehouses that are bigger than 500,000 square feet. And we said, in certain zoning districts, we're going to add an additional Planning Commission review.
So is there any new area now?
Oh, I think, Ms. Ebert, we just lost your voice. We'll wait till you come and sit in the chair. We can get you on. There we go.
Oh, good, you're here.
Is there any new locations where they weren't previously allowed, or they're now allowed?
No, we've actually reduced it. And not, well, we have reduced it, and we've added more entitlement review.
Great. Thank you for that.
One thing, too, that I, just with any warehouse or anything else, I think it's good to keep in mind, like, the aesthetics, instead of just these buildings that are, you know, large concrete, or they're just, really don't sort of move you in any way. But a lot of cities are doing murals and art and things like that on these warehouses. And then, on the outside, it would be great to get more recreation opportunities, like, you know, running tracks or, what do you call it?
Any kind of trail system, really, is probably a good thing.
Right. Or some outdoor use in some capacity, because I think when you're building them, you can blend them a little nicer. So there's a lot of creative ways you can do it. Roller skating path, I don't know. Okay. Okay. With that being said, I guess I'm gonna make a motion, or Councilwoman, do you want to make a motion? Okay. I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, sending it back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're on item F2, ordinance adoption, to be read by the City Attorney's Office.
Okay, we're gonna send it right back to you. Carl?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance adoption, ordinance number 6693, case number LDC 25 dash 00011, Arrow Leaf Zoning Map Amendment, ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.02 of the Reno Municipal Code, titled zoning rezoning a plus or minus 1.96 acre site for multi-family residential, 30 units per acre, MF 30 to general commercial, GC. The site is comprised of five parcels located on the west side of Harvard Way, plus or minus 550 feet north of its intersection with Vassar Street. The site has a master plan designation of suburban mixed use, SMU, Ward 3.
All right, thank you, Carl. I'm gonna ask, Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment out of this item?
Madam Mayor, we do not have any public comment registered.
Okay. Any questions on Ward 3? Councilwoman Martinez, anything?
I don't have any questions at this point. We're ready to make a motion.
Thank you so much. Please do.
I'll move to adopt.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I have a question.
Oh, wait, hold on.
I have a question. Yeah. So what, what kind of develop, can they just, staff just kind of tell us what kind of development is anticipated for this location?
Multi-family?
Multi-family, but like, is it an apartment complex, or duplexes, or?
That's usually multi-family, so.
Yeah, I understand, but there's a big range, you know. There's 200 units, there's 50 units.
Hold on a second. Go right ahead. Come on up. I don't know if you know anything about, if there's a future project. Usually, we don't look at that at this time.
Jeff Foster, Associate Planner, for the record. This came forward with also a conditional use permit.
Oh, yeah.
It was for 168 units of affordable, multifamily housing. So the conditional use permit was already approved at the Planning Commission. This body deliberated on the zone change and recommended it for approval. And this is just the second reading. So, but yes, it is a 168-unit affordable housing complex.
Oh, good.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was only asking because I'm missing it from my staff report. Oh, it was stapled to something else. I apologize. So thank you for that.
So do you know the developer?
Yes, this is Pacific, gosh, Pacific West.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Affordable housing. Good, good job. All right. Any other questions, Councilwoman?
No, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Madam Clerk, sending it back to you.
Madam Mayor, we're on item G1, which is an appointment to the Access Advisory Committee.
Okay, I'm gonna send it down to Councilwoman Anderson. Go ahead, take it away. Who would you like to appoint?
I'll have to pull up the information here.
Okay.
And if you're not prepared, you can also ask for it to come back.
I just haven't done it before.
Yeah, don't worry about it. I'm actually gonna head over to Councilwoman Martinez. We can come right back to that. Councilwoman Martinez, you have an appointment for
On G2?
Uh, this is for the
Recreation Park?
Recreation, yeah. Good appointments. Okay, go ahead. Councilwoman Martinez.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. At this moment, I mean, we do have some more appli, some folks turning out on the commission. I know we had a public commenter come in earlier, so I'm hoping to appoint her at this, at a later date. But at this point, we'd like to move forward with appointing Cheryl Gwinen
Okay.
to the Recreation and Parks Commission.
Okay, sounds good. Let me just double-check with Madam Clerk. Do we have any public comment on item G2?
We do not have any public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Then, we would like to, obviously, Councilman has made a motion for Cheryl Gwinen. And then he will bring it back to another meeting on the rest of his appointments. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. No problem. Don't worry about it. It's all good. Okay, Councilwoman Anderson, you have an appointment for Access Advisory Board, which I love that board. It's amazing. Who would you like to appoint?
I would like to reappoint Jack Mays and Craig Moss.
Great.
Please?
Great choices. Okay. With that being said, I have a motion from Councilwoman Anderson. May I get a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Good job. Okay. Heading over, I believe, to item G3, Madam Clerk, is that correct? No, yes?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Councilwoman Martinez, is this you?
I believe so.
Youth City Council, Councilmember?
Yes, sorry, I lost my general. Yeah, so for Youth City Council, I'd like to recommend appointing Rowan Muir for the position.
Great. And I love to see all these young, future leaders on here. This is great. Okay.
We have a lot of interest.
Good, yeah. That's, quite honestly, we have not seen this much interest in Youth City Council. So I'm, I'm optimistic for sure. Okay. So I have your appointment. So I have your motion. May I get a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. And now I'm gonna head over to item G4. Councilwoman Taylor, go ahead. This is your appointment, I believe. Is this your NAB?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
I would like to appoint to the Ward 1 NAB in alphabetical order, Sunny Allen, Dalton Carson, Gary Cecil, Claudia Davis, Dana Delciano, Shonda Golden, Diane Simon, and Michael Stedman.
Okay, that's super awesome. All these people are great. That's a great NAB. Okay. So I have your motion. I'll make a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Good job. I'm gonna send it, I think, back down where item G5, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk, but we're gonna send it back to Councilwoman Martinez.
Yes, thanks again, Madam Mayor. I have three recommendations for the Ward 3 NAB, with the first being Anthony Dischensier. Actually, four. The second being Jürgen Honig, the third Gabriel Maya is a reappointment, and then the fourth Valerie Tilson.
Okay, great. All right. So I have a motion from Councilwoman Martinez. Do I get a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We're gonna head over to item G6. This is for the Ward 4 Neighborhood Advisory Board for Councilwoman Ebert. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to appoint Larissa Wunning. I'm so sorry if I'm mispronouncing that.
Wunning.
And also Kelsey Menno. And I would like to bring Chad back on the agenda. We're trying to meet to see if, if, you know, he's a good fit. I'd like to make sure he's aware of, you know, fully aware of what he's signing up for. So he might be appointed in the future, but for now, just these two.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay, I have a motion from Councilwoman Ebert.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good job. Okay.
Madam Mayor, I apologize. If we can go back to item G4 with Vice Mayor, there are seven individuals and two alternates. She did say eight names, and so I just need to specified, specify if one of them, or which one of them is the alternate.
Okay. Do you know which one's the alternate?
Um, yes.
Or if you want to appoint the seven, and then we can bring back
An alternate.
An agenda item at a later date for more names.
So I believe it's Claudia Davis is the alternate.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Okay, so with that being said, I believe, Madam Clerk, we are in item H, correct?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
The thing I do want to point out, which I think is really important, I don't know if this has to go through Carl or Jackie, our City Attorney, but one of the things that probably needs to happen when it comes to appointments, and I'm curious to know the law on this, Carl, really, for Planning Commission, we do not have representation from the new Ward, correct? And then, what about Councilwoman Taylor, because of the drawing of the redistrict? So that would be Ward 1. I have an appointment coming up. I believe my Planning Commissioner is leaving. There could be another one leaving. So almost an entire Planning Commission. But I don't know, how does that work with the new redistricting of the Ward? Because I feel like there's not representation from the new Ward 6. And also, because yours was realigned, what does that look like?
I think we may have to go to Legislature to change the statute that would make the Planning Commissioners term co-terminous with the City Council members. And so that's
But what happens if you don't have a Ward? Because then, that means Ward 6 is not represented.
Their term is for four years. So unless, unless you can terminate them for cause, so.
No, no, I mean, there's no, there's no Ward representative in Ward 6, because it's a new Ward. Why can't we appoint a Ward 6 member, so that there's representation for Ward 6?
Because the law requires that their, their term is for four years. And so.
I know, but wouldn't we be adding a seat?
No, well, let me take a look at it, and we'll meet with you.
Okay. I would love to bring that back. We'll, we'll research it and figure it out, because I don't think that there's representation in your Ward.
Correct. And I have somebody I would like to appoint. I've done the interviews and things, so.
And then I, and then I do feel that since that Ward, Ward 1 is now completely different.
Well, and I would absolutely agree. And I think my Planning Commissioner, or the Ward 1 representative, went against what was advised legally. So if we have to get into the cause at the last Planning Commission meeting, I don't think it's fully representative either.
Okay. So, City Manager, will you help me?
I will take a look at that and meet with the City Attorney's Office, and then we'll bring something back for you at the next council.
Yeah. And I, like I said, I feel really strongly about Ward 6.
I understand.
You don't have any, you don't have anyone on there? Brandy? Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Any other council comments?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Ebert.
I would like to ask for the changes or the amendments to code for the data centers to be brought back for a future agenda item.
Councilwoman, both?
Yeah.
Dewar put it on, well, I brought it up, but I think she's reiterating when it says
Yeah, make sure it's
Yep.
on there. And then, also, I just wanted to, you know, I'm still the liaison to the Senior Advisory Board for this year, but just wanted to remind people, we still have the cooking classes, third Wednesday of the month. You can sign up on Reno.gov for that. And we have other activities. The gentleman that comes faithfully every council meeting, Terry Brooks, that reads things that he's written. He also hosts a poetry class to write poetry and things like that.
Is he on the commission, or no?
He's also on the Senior Advisory Board. Yeah, he's wonderful. And
He's great.
Yeah. So just wanted to let people know if they have any interest in looking for activities to do to check out, just remind people to check out Reno.gov for things. I know specifically about senior-related stuff, but there's all kinds of things. So just shout out for Reno.gov on that.
Okay, good. All right. Anyone else? Councilwoman Anderson, go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to make sure that the community knows that applications are open for my NAB that is being formed as we speak.
Good.
Hopefully, our first meeting will be in March, and there's gonna be some exciting things happening in April in my Ward. So if you want to go to Reno.gov and apply, I would love it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, great. Fantastic.
That reminded me, real quick, sorry, round two for me. I just wanted to let everyone know, we've had my NABs at the North Hills Public Library, but due to the budget cuts that are a result of the last election, we will no longer be able to have our NAB at that location. So we'll be holding them at the Stead Airport for the time being. They've graciously agreed to let us use our space, and it's not currently a community center in Ward 4. So just wanted to let everybody know, if you're watching, to please go to the Stead Airport for the Ward 4 NAB. It's the third Thursday of the month, starts at 6:00 PM. So hope, so you can make it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Good job. Okay, I'm gonna send it back to Madam Clerk. Any public comment?
Madam Mayor, so on item J1, we do not have any public comment registered. If you're in Zoom and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. We did receive three comments after 4:00 PM yesterday, or general in nature throughout the day today. They were three letters of opposition. Those have been sent to the Reno City Council. And with that, we have no additional public comment. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you so much. May I get a motion?
I have a motion to adjourn.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, everyone. Good job.